Ladies and gentlemen, we'll go ahead and get started. As if it's a surprise, we'll get started with the pledge, if we could all stand. Mr. Lachalele, listen to the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever living in its essence.
All right, great. We'll go ahead and get started with our agenda item 2.1, update on Milton Elementary Middle School additions and renovations project. Dr. Aguilar, Mr. Bordelone?
Good evening, members of the Facilities Committee. Kyle Bordelone, Director of Planning and Facilities. Like to share with you tonight a brief presentation by the architects with the Milton Elementary Middle School project, Mr. Mark Stillper with the MBSB Group. We've been working over the last several weeks on different layouts, on the design for the building, on the site, and access for a new parent pickup drive. So I'll let Mr. Stillper get into some of those details in his presentation.
I noticed Kyle said "brief." Good evening, all. I am Mark Stillper. I'm the principal in charge with the MBSB Group. With me tonight is Jeff Jertson. He's the principal architect, also working with me, and Michelle Dupree, our interior designer. We're very pleased to be here, again, appreciate the opportunity immensely to be a part of this project. Our project is Milton Elementary. You know, the slide, as you're looking at it, you see, you know, the dominance of the river form and how the Village of Milton kind of wraps around that river form. You can see that the school and the church are kind of the main two entities in the community. Everything kind of revolves and centers around those two institutions. From that, I think we're trying to take a lot of the driver for our design influence. Again, I'm gonna go quickly. If there's anything I need to go back and touch on, please let me know. But this is just an overview of the property. You can see the main white portion as the existing piece. There were some recently acquired pieces in the last few years. And on the front right portion of the site, there is a sale pending on what we were terming the White House piece, and that should complete the property that we're using. Milton School presently is made up of 56,000 square feet of permanent structure, 28,000 in portable buildings, so a third of your school is in portable classrooms. Our overall project program goal is to get rid of all those portables and provide enough classrooms to take you from the thousand students that you are now to 1,200, so that 20% growth. And that 1,200 is the anticipated cap on the school. When we kind of really schematically look at a diagram of the school, you see us circling the portables in the middle to the left, or the east west side, I'm sorry. There's a really nice cooley that kind of is the edge of the site. I'm gonna come back to that later in this presentation. As you go forward to Milton Avenue, presently, the entrance to the school was really undefined. That's one of the main things that we want to try to correct with what we're doing beyond the classroom addition. And as I kind of get into the program of the school, we've programmed 66,000 square feet of area. And I'm gonna let Jeff kind of go through that. He's been intimately involved in it and get his discussion.
Thank you. So we're adding about 2,300 square feet for administration in the new wing, about 3,000 square feet to double the size of the cafeteria, and add another serving line, because, as you know, now currently they're unable to serve a very large percentage of the students in a quick manner. So that's gonna allow for that. In addition, we're expanding the library and adding a maker space for really hands-on, interactive learning. We'll be adding 42 new classrooms, in addition to the existing 24 permanent classrooms, for a total of 66. And you can see, we've also added flex space, or additional learning spaces, that are positioned outside of the classroom areas for collaborative activities that may happen, that we're calling flex spaces. And then we're using a 38% burden factor, which accounts for structure and circulation and mechanical. So the river, as Mark said, is really this dominant feature that we see in the landscape. And to us, it also represented a way of organizing the building, so that we can avoid the traditional straight cells and bells of the old classroom style, where you had classrooms just lined up along a corridor. And one of the things that we wanted to bring out in this is, again, this idea that the village kind of builds up around the river over time. And so this idea of a village is really appropriate today, in the idea of small learning communities. And so that river element begins to connect. What we'll show you in a little bit is the new car drop-off, which is a very important issue that needs to be solved at Milton, is the cars are backing up onto adjacent roads. And we're gonna provide a queue road that allows for them to be completely on the property. But that, the river idea is a way of connecting the car drop-off to the existing building, and then to these new learning communities, which are classroom areas that are grouped together. The new administration and the library. And of course, you can see the other breakdown of gymnasium, the existing school for pre-K to second, and the portables to be moved. So just to give you a little more detail, this is the first floor plan, showing the car drop-off to the upper left, and a new covered walkway to connect to the existing entrance of the building. Now, one of the major problems with the existing building is the kind of lack of a clear entrance, and the fact that the kitchen and the service area is right in the front. So with the new addition, we're creating a new entrance, so that the school can really have a beautiful, presentable front face for the community. And then you can see this river begins to connect the library, the extension of the cafeteria, the administration, and then these three learning communities on the first floor, and three on the second floor. The green that's highlighted shows you an idea for some outdoor learning areas, some garden spaces outside of the classrooms. The dark blue in the upper left, again, shows the car drop-off area. The yellow in the center is the pre-K playground, which is in a protected courtyard, as well as an outdoor reading area off the library. The purple line shows you fencing for security to be able to secure the courtyard during the day, as well as an outdoor reading area adjacent to a large oak tree. And this oak tree really became a dominant feature in our design, in terms of creating an entry, preserving that oak, and creating a beautiful outdoor space. The red shows you the maker area, which is immediately adjacent to the entry and next to the library. And the orange shows the learning stair, which is a feature that allows for seating, as well as a stair up to the upper level. This is the second floor, three more classroom pods, so as you can see, there is one grade in each of these. At the second level, it's the sixth, seventh, and eighth, with the lab spaces in the center. This is a blow-up of the fourth grade on the first floor, showing the fat L configuration, which is a new classroom form that we're looking into and talking to everyone in the school system about, which would provide these kind of smaller breakout areas in the classroom, or centers for some of the younger grades.
And now we're kind of back to kind of the overall concept. And you can really see, again, kind of going back and recapping, from the far left, the drop-off, you know, the child drop-off there, wrapping all the way, connecting all the way through the existing structure into the new classroom building. So we really think the river and the village theme, you know, is gonna provide the best 21st century learning environment for these kids. Kind of looking at it from a perspective of driving in the main entrance, you can kind of see the yellow color that is really the accent color for the entrance. If you look at it there, it's yellow. A little bit later on, you see, and we're kind of looking at it in a red color. We're right now at the end of schematic design. We're kind of still searching for refinement, a lot of those things. But essentially, what we're looking for from you guys, any comments, any help, any recommendations that you want to bring to the table. Little bit closer view. Little bit closer view coming up on the entrance. Eric said he had the rights to the yellow, so we had to change to the red. So there's your red. So that's where we are right now with our building image. One concept that we're kind of trying to explore is, on that west side, on the cooley side, we were talking about maybe trying to do a little outdoor learning science pavilion, possibly, out there. And we're trying to see and entertain the idea of kind of a public-private partnership. If we can kind of get donations to kind of work on something like that, we're gonna try to take that as far forward as we can, just to, you know, just to put that out there. Time-wise, where we are presently, we are, we've submitted, we're going through the plating process with LCG. We are set for the August agenda. The piece, the sale of the property is kind of key to that. Hopefully, everything goes through, and there's no hitch to that. Right following that, we're gonna, we are looking at starting that road, that internal road construction. So we're hoping that internal road construction can start bidding in August, September, and be underway in October, be done for the end of January. As far as the general construction project itself, our design phase goes through kind of Thanksgiving of this year. We're looking to put it out to bid at the end of the year, and be under construction for February, and be ready for the fall of 2018 school year. Our budget right now, just in big round numbers, is about $15,000 for the construction budget, nine, I'm sorry, I wish it was 15,000. $15 million for the construction budget, $19 million all-in with all the furnitures, fixtures, security, IT, all those other items. This is a little summary recap, again, picking up the car ride, car ride road, the existing gym HVAC, kitchen renovation, all those items totaling up into the $15 million range. This is kind of showing the interior road queue that we have on the left side of the site. It will run from the back of the site to Lepe Nae on the front. And that's really where we are. Any questions that we can help you with, or answer, or?
Mr. Bordelone, we approved the purchase of that property at the last school board meeting, correct? So there shouldn't be any hang-ups. We should be moving forward, right?
The sales agreement has been signed. We just have the title opinion cleared up, and then close, the actual close. 90% sure, we haven't closed yet. The property is, we have the sales agreement signed.
Okay. And for whatever it's worth, I believe that the design looks fantastic, and I am in favor of the red.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For their school colors, it might be burgundy, but close enough. Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it. Mr. Bordelone? Any closing remarks on this item?
No closing remarks.
Okay. Do you need any action?
No, sir.
Okay. Item 2.2, proposed Como High Performing Arts Auditorium and Support Spaces. Mr. Bordelone?
Thank you. Staff has, staff has asked two different architectural firms here in Lafayette to make some preliminary estimates and sketches on the proposed Como High Performing Arts Auditorium and Support Spaces. First up, I will ask Mr. Wayne Domang with Architects Southwest to show us some sketches and aerial photos that he superimposed different layouts of where the auditorium could be placed on the Como High Auditorium, Como High campus. And following up to Mr. Domang will be Mr. Eric Crozier with Abel Crozier Davis. He was asked to put together some estimates of probable cost for such auditorium and the support spaces. We had some of our staff go out and make some assessments of the spaces that would be needed for support of the Performing Arts Academy there at Como High. And based on that information was what the two architectural firms based their findings off of. So their cost estimates and the square footage is needed for that. So at that point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Domang.
Thank you, Kyle. Let's see if we can open this. Good afternoon. As Kyle indicated, both he and Dr. Aguilar contacted me and our firm to look into some options for the placement of some facilities at Como. I was provided some information that Mr. Crozier put together about a month ago, relative to some very preliminary numbers, based on the compilation of spaces that we're determined to be looking forward for the program. So with that, we looked at some overall, very big-picture observations. And again, what I'll show you is not to be construed as any firm fixed layout of the spaces, or sizes, or placements of the building. They're at a 10,000-foot elevation, if you would, looking down on what could be a big picture. So looking first off, with the existing campus, just to get an overview of the spaces that we are familiar, the central courtyard there, and then the band and the choral area on the bottom left, and of course, the baseball and the softball fields over on the west side of Student Drive. We were actually asked to look at several different locations on the campus, for the west side taking in the baseball field, and possibly considering some relocation of that element. And then on the east side, where there are some open areas. So we've actually looked at both of those components, and then a third one, just again, to allow discussion, if nothing else. So we've taken the area where the current baseball field is. And obviously, there are pros and there are cons with all of those particular areas. The idea is, where do you relocate a varsity baseball field? One consideration that was thrown out for discussion was the potential, and again, it's potential, because none of this has been explored, is to use the adjacent ball field at Bowier Park. That would, of course, have to be worked out with LCG, and schedules, and things of that nature. And there's also some other inherent problems with that. This is a high school baseball field, and the distance along the foul lines, as an example, are 310 feet. The Bowier Park, the largest one there, is 250 feet. So that wouldn't work in its current state. There might have to be considerations looked at. And if you're familiar with, Finaway Park is the best example I can give, where they interject a very high outfield wall that addresses the trajectory of a homerun ball that could work. So there would be options that could possibly be worked out. Obviously, again, have to discuss with LCG for that. Another scenario would be to take the varsity baseball field located to the east side of the campus, currently where there are two temporary buildings that are currently in place. That, unfortunately, would mean, very likely, the turning of the two practice football fields 90 degrees, so that you, again, can get the baseball footprint to fit. So those are the two kind of outliers in this particular area as to what you do with the baseball field. But what we've looked at here, and what you see in front of you, is simply a graphic representation of what we were looked at to start off with about a $12 million budget. That was the number that was given to us, to see what actually could fit into that. And looking at Mr. Crozier's numbers that he had put together earlier, it basically evolved to the auditorium component, which was projected to be an 800-seat component, obviously, the stage and support areas that go behind it, the lobby and its ancillary functions, such as the restroom, concession, ticket booth, those kind of items. Also, within that 12 million, it was looked at what was called a black box, which is a more flexible performing space. It was programmed into the mix. So as you can see, I've kind of listed the components that are actually in this configuration here, on the west side, taking in the varsity stadium, the auditorium with its components, the Black Box Theater, which we projected for about 100 to 125 persons, its associated costume storage areas, the prop and the stage set areas. Obviously, you'll have mechanical components. And for this element, you would need about 160 additional parking spaces for the 800 seats of the auditorium, that is by the current code, and 30 seats for the Black Box Theater. Now, there may be some alternatives to explore. With the UDC that the city has, there are options for some joint usage of parking areas. So the large parking area that you have to the north conceivably could be looked at for some shared use. Again, we didn't get into that kind of depth in this analysis or study. It's just something that could be explored, once it's actually moved forward to perhaps the next level. The remaining portions of the program is shown here, depicted in a build-out of Phase Two. Again, still shows that it could fit in the current area of the varsity baseball field. That particular component of the program added some additional areas for the band suite, the practice rooms for the existing choral suite, which were also programmed in the information given to us. And then in addition, the other components of the Performing Arts Academy, the string suite, the music media suite, the piano suite, and a dance studio. For that additional square footage, there would be an additional 40 parking spaces, or thereabouts, would be required. So this is a depiction of a build-out of a footprint for what could conceivably be on the west side of the facility. Looking to the east side of the facility, which is basically the open land, there are two temporary classrooms that are currently there. It's basically the same programmatic requirements that would go into this particular area, as I said earlier. You see that listed on the right, and the parking spaces. We also could create an area where there may be plazas and entrances. I think there may be some discussions about some future parking to the south of the road here. All of that could be factored in, again, as the ultimate programmatic issues would take place. But the interesting thing on this particular component is that fitting in this area, the baseball fields, obviously, are not affected. And then you've got the two practice fields, which, from a square footage standpoint, appear to be able to be remain in their current use. The build-out could be projected, again, in the same area where the two temporaries are. The additional parking also factored into that particular area. And we also included the additional band room addition, as you can see down in the bottom left there. The negatives of this, as I would say, is, if there is a con, is that the band and the choral components are still relegated to the opposite side of the campus. So if you're looking at performing arts, or they all combined in one particular area, there's nothing to say that in the future, that perhaps another phase could include the band and choral build-out, so that your entire Performing Arts Academy was all located on the east side of the facility. Again, just an option, but it does look like that's something that would be able to fit in the footprint there. If you were to look at perhaps even a third option, and again, there are a lot of positives and there are negatives with this, in terms of being all centrally located to where the current choral and band department is, the building that's currently at the bottom, we can actually fit the performance theater in that area. There's an existing building, which I'm told is no longer really in use, it used to be a gym, a gemstone-type fabrication area, that that is no longer being used for that. So that area may be available, and could take the footprint of the actual stage component. Connecting to the band area, the black box is that 3,500-square-foot area that you see, connecting back to the band and the choral area. And then you still have your lobby and component, Phase One. The negatives, obviously, it infringes into the courtyard. You've got two very, very nice oak trees there, and I'm not advocating taking the trees down, but I'm looking at options of where things could go in a more consolidated fashion. And then when the Phase Two element could come, there's that open footprint that you see, where I show the 7,600 square foot. That would actually take into account the string, the music, the piano studio, and the dance, would be the 6,000 component, which is taking in the old industrial arts component. So you've now consolidated everything, if you will, in one particular quadrant of the site. The negative, again, or a con, if you will, is that their industrial arts would potentially have to be relocated somewhere else, because it is taking the footprint of the industrial arts. So looking at each of these options, based on the numbers that were provided to me, we are looking at about a $12 million Phase One, somewhere in that particular range. And then the remaining of Phase Two would end up being probably somewhere, I think Eric will confirm, 6 million, somewhere in that particular area. But he'll go over the numbers in his, in his study in a minute. So again, just three options that were put out there, showing that there is available footprint, there are positives, and there are detriments to each of those particular sites. With that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have. Okay, thank you.
We worked with Architects Southwest to go through what collaborated back and forth to see, you know, what the plan, how the plans evolved, and the money had to kind of react to that. So essentially, what we did do was a preliminary program early on, was not attached to funding. And then as that program hardened up a little bit, then we put some opinions of probable cost to it. I would, the little package that you have, just, you know, it might be easier just to leave them clipped together, and we'll walk through it. What we've got is, there are three options that Wayne had just presented, option one, two, and three. And then there's Phase One and Two per option. So there's quite a few pages that we're gonna go through. Essentially, what we've got is, programmatically, they're all very, very similar. There are some differences between options one and two, and options three. So what we could do is walk through option one, Phase One first, and then in Phase Two, and essentially, the other options would then follow suit. So essentially, on the first page, what we've got, if it was graded out, that is not a part of this particular option. So option one, we did remove the band suites, choral, guitar, strings, piano, music media from option one. Option one is essentially our Theater Arts Auditorium itself, which does include some classroom, and it is 800 seats. Like Wayne was saying, you know, all the backstage support, lobbies, classrooms, there's a couple classrooms here, dressing rooms, prop storage. Dance suite was an item that was removed from this original, or from this particular option. We did include custodial areas, mechanical areas, those types of things. This is also, you'll notice on option one, Phase One, we included an allowance to relocate the baseball field. So that number is captured, or in here as well. You've got, you're listing a soft costs, design fees, furniture, fixture, and equipment, your owner-provided consultants, meaning your geotechnical survey. We've got numbers in there for that, a little bit of acoustical. Your construction testing, we've got a few detailed items in here. You do have an incidental owner items, you know, items that we're gonna discover as the design moves forward, and the owner's gonna discover. And then a four-and-a-half percent project contingency, which is, you know, it's not the highest contingency you can have, it's a little, it's not necessarily conservative. But to keep it right around 12 million, it's about four-and-a-half percent. So what you end up with is just shy under 12 million, 11,996 for Phase One. Phase Two of option one, again, if it was graded out, it's not included. So you've got a band suite in here, choral suite, guitar, strings, piano, music, those are all included in Phase Two. Dance suite is in Phase Two, and it's coming to a total of, let's see, we're, with all the soft costs in that, you're about 5.6 million to add Phase Two to it. So if you add them together, you're roughly 17 and a half million between Phase One and Phase Two for option one. Now, the uniqueness with option one, as Wayne was saying, was that you, where you put it there, you'll need to relocate the base- there, you'll need to relocate the baseball field. So, when you look at Option Two, what are the differences between Option Two and Option One? The main difference is the fact we would not relocate the baseball field in Option Two. You're, as Wayne said, pros and cons, you're also on the other side of the campus from where the current choral music area is now. So, again, number of spaces is the same, you've got the same number of seats in your theater, we've removed the relocation of the baseball field and we're at 11,462. So, we're a little more than $450,000 removed because you removed some of your soft cost percentages on top of that, too. Option Two, Phase Two, is essentially a mirror of what we anticipate happening in Phase One. Option One, Phase One, we're all going to get turned around with these Option Ones, Twos, and Phases. Option Three, quite a bit more difficult to put together numbers on Option Three because of the existing conditions, you're getting closer to the building, you're engaging the students more, you will, we most likely will pay a little bit of a premium to get that close to school. You know, the contractors, they're going to have a higher security level, they're going to have to deal with, you know, we're going to have fencing, we're going to have a lot more things to keep the safety of the students, it's certainly going to be the primary. So, what we did, again, Option Three, Phase One, the only difference here is that you'll notice that the costs per foot have increased to deal with the fact that, you know, we've got, demolition's its own number, we're going to have more complexity to deal with in the project. So, we increased those numbers about seven and a half percent per foot to deal with the complexity of the project, and then we did add, again, you wouldn't have to have the baseball relocation, but you've got demolition costs. So we took the baseball out, inserted a demolition number in there of about 600,000. So when you look at the increase in your cost per foot and the demolition inclusion, the ballpark there is just under 13 million, 12,956, 776. So your average cost per foot there goes up to deal with that complexity. Option Three, Phase Two, again, same type of relationships, the, you don't have as much demolition there, but you will increase your general contractor's overhead and those numbers, so those went up again seven and a half percent, so you're a little over 6 million on your Option Three, Phase Two. These numbers, what we did to get these numbers is we certainly took the current numbers that we're looking at, that we're getting in from the general contractor on the high school, you know, those numbers are current, and reached out to other communities, Baton Rouge, looked at kind of what they're doing to try to put together what we think these estimated numbers might be. So, any questions?
First of all, Mr. Lachale and Ms. Morris, I mean, not only are Options One and Options Three more expensive, but to me, they make no sense, moving a baseball field and destroying the heart of the outer part of the school, the quad. So, it only makes sense to me, representing that school and having gone to that school, that the only thing that should be entertained, in my opinion, would be the east side of the school. And that's ignoring the cost, and when you throw the cost in, well, Options One and Option Three are more expensive. And I know, you know, since the finance committee's not meeting on this and we're not the finance committee, I guess we'll stay away as much as we can from the numbers and deal more with, but I do have a couple of numbers questions, but, you know, we'll allow the finance committee to vet that, but I mean, as it relates to the facility itself, maybe we can give some direction or some recommendation regarding that here shortly, but we'll open for questions, and I have a few if I can go ahead and get them started. The first question that I have, what happens, and it's a finance question, what happens if you reduce seating? How does that impact the cost of this project? Obviously, we know how it impacts the footprint, but how does it impact the cost of the project and what proportion?
I think it depends on how many seats that you were to decide to remove. When you look at square foot cost, the danger with square foot cost is that, we have to remember this is an average square foot cost. So, if you decide we're going to take the seating down by 100 seats, the average in that area was like about 325, that doesn't mean that the mechanical system is going to drop that much to deal with it. So, we probably won't get $325 per square foot back when you reduce that number. It certainly would reduce the number, but it's also one of those that if you decide we want to put the 100 seats back, unless you plan to put those 100 seats back and knew right where you were going to do it, you wouldn't get those 100 seats back. So, you know, if there's, if cost was an issue and we were looking at maybe additional phases, we would probably look at other spaces that you could add to the building after it was built rather than the seating capacity. Seating capacity is the, it's a tough one because it's a high number, so that's the number we gravitate toward, let's cut that number. But you, we most likely aren't going to get $325 a foot back for every one of those because we won't reduce the mechanical system enough, you know, we won't reduce the electrical system virtually at all to handle that. So, the staging, you know, the black box, you know, so it's, those are where a lot of the numbers and the increase in those numbers come from. So there may be other locations where we could look at reducing that number that might give the school district more of a long-term ability to put that back rather than the seats. But certainly, if we had a different target number, then we would figure out a way to... But that theater component, you know, like Wayne was mentioning, the seats and the stage, that is where that, that's where that highest number is coming from, that, those are expensive spaces. And $325 a foot is not exorbitant at all, you know, it's a, I'm not going to say entry level, but it's right there between entry and mid, it's not between mid and high end, it's entry and mid is about where we are.
And then, second question, I guess, and I guess it would be for the superintendent. Getting back to the concept and getting away from the numbers and just the general concept of this, you know, the board voted to move Performing Arts, and so that's where this conversation started. The concern that I have is, is that my understanding and appreciation of moving Performing Arts and the need for this facility is for a place for these students to, first of all, practice and learn, and then, second of all, perform. This is a humongous project beyond what I expected to see as it relates to the learning component. So, because I know we have plenty of space to perform around this parish, my question is, is this necessary right now for the learning component? And as we said, as I said, making sure the students have what they need, we all know what we want, this is great, but the question is, is it necessary? And so I just, I'd like to know from you what the vision is.
Sure, I appreciate that. I think the conversation that had developed in the discussion about moving the program led me to believe that the board was cognizant that we do need to provide adequate facilities. And so, I think that prompted the conversation today. It's interesting that the idea of an 800-seat auditorium is not just a fixed number where it's 800, it could well be that, that as a school auditorium, that would be a smaller venue than 800 seats, because we're providing a place for performances to occur. We're not necessarily entering into this to make money, to rent out the facility to replace some venue that's in the city already. It may well be it's a 600-seat auditorium that would allow performances to take place. 600 compared to 800 would probably drive this cost down significantly. I mean, it's something that I think we need to decide, we're going into this movement of this program in 17, 18, and we know we can rent buildings in Lafayette. Do we want that to be the long-term solution to the performance area for Performing Arts? Renting Angel Hall, the Hyman Center, the Cajun Dome, the Convention Center, do we want that to be how we handle performances, or do we try to mix and match this? All along, I've been led to believe that it had been widely assumed that Como High School would one day be the Performing Arts School in the district. It just makes sense that the end game would be we would have an adequate performance area for those students as they develop these skills.
Thank you. Mr. Lachale?
I guess my question is, kind of on the same lines you were talking, I'm going to ask the Performing Arts people sitting in the audience, would it be better to start with Phase One, or would it be better to start with Phase Two? With all the suites for the strings, band rooms, so forth and so on? We can rent auditoriums, that could be Phase Two. Would it be better to build the learning spaces first, then go to an auditorium? Give the students what they need from day one, I think we can get that built quicker.
If we could have you come up to the mic, because it's recorded. Oh, please.
I mean, that's just my thinking, if we can take, you know, 12 million, if we can take seven or eight million and give them all the learning spaces they need and make the auditorium. And my second question, I guess while we're talking, Lafayette Middle, MP Moss, Lafayette High Auditorium, you know, not Judy's, that's a small one, what do they normally seat?
Eight hundred.
In general, auditoriums have the size of your auditorium, average size of your freshman class. I have not been at Como, I have freshman class averages 500 now. Kind of in school before, freshman class.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
My name is Nicole Hawkins, I'm the dance instructor currently at Lafayette High. Personally, I feel like it would be better to go with having classrooms, learning spaces built first, that's, I just feel like I don't know what we would do without that, I don't know where we would be on a day-to-day basis, and that was my concern. But as it is currently, renting spaces around the community like Angel Hall, things like that, depends on what you need it for. For dance, for me, Lafayette High was becoming dangerous only because the removable storage in the front, I don't have flooring to cover that. For dance, it's not particularly safe. And I was able to rent Angel Hall for two nights at around $1,600 a year to do a full show with lighting and the whole deal. And for me, it was a space issue, so I knew my kids could fit onstage, because my biggest class at the time, I had 28 kids, so it was a lot to fit. To try and do that at Lafayette High, I had done that every year, had done two shows up until just two years ago on Lafayette High's stage, but I feel like, on a day-to-day thing, we need to be having classrooms that I feel like I can dance in, just like them. I don't know where we would be. Dance is obviously more difficult than band or choir or strings, so, space.
I mean, my way of thinking, and my line of thinking this way is, to grow Performing Arts, which is why we moved it.
Right.
We didn't move it to watch it die, we moved it so that it can grow. You're going to have the room to grow, if you have the educational space in the classrooms and the studios or whatever you call it, the acoustic rooms, I think that allows the students to become better performers, and we can go to the performance venue down the line. Now, this black box theater or whatever, this 100, 125 seat, I don't want to sound like I don't know what I'm talking about, but is that a smaller auditorium? Okay, I mean, flexible, you could probably start with that and the learning spaces and then come back with auditorium in Phase Two. That's just, that's just my way, that's just me thinking out loud on TV.
I do want to say that renting bigger spaces such as Hyman Center and Angel Hall are particularly difficult in the spring. I teach for a studio as well, a private dance studio, and it, I mean, they have something booked daily during the weekend, the weekend, so I just want to put that out there, that it is not particularly that easy to make that happen when we want to all the time, so that's it.
So, Mr. Hidalgo, the, just using the freshman class size, Como average freshman class size is 450 to 500 students.
I'm Brian Lefei, Director of the Visual Arts Academy at Como for the last eight years. As I addressed the board several months ago about the program, we certainly welcome Performing Arts to our campus, we're excited. All the art faculty and core faculty are really looking forward to collaboration with the Performing Arts guys. What I did notice was a glaring absence of visual arts concerns and space in this facility. My thinking would be that to have an academy of the arts would certainly generate much more interest in the community and outside of our community, allowing the students to really learn collaborative efforts among visual, performing, theater, music, and get more bang for our buck this way. So, classrooms, studio spaces, we currently have six studio spaces on campus for the Visual Arts Academy, but we're all separated out. I have two on one side of campus, there are two in another part, and then two in the main building. To me, it would make more connection, not only with visual arts students, but also with the Performing Arts, to have that combination of all the arts together, creating things for our larger community, and, you know, the Como community certainly, but for the larger community and throughout the state. I mean, it would be something that would be a beacon for all of us, you know, something to be very proud of. Thanks.
I'm Dr. Roban, Director of the Performing Arts Academy. I'm both a pessimist and a compromiser. I understand finances, having two out-of-state college degrees and a lot of student loan burden, and I know that once you go to an Option Two, Phase Two, then that money becomes a little bit harder to acquire and then kind of depends more on local economies and tax funds and things like that. Knowing that the Como class size is smaller than Lafayette High and probably wouldn't increase dramatically, I would suggest perhaps maybe looking at a smaller auditorium space and studio spaces to see if we can't find some sort of happy medium, because if we wait to build the auditorium for, let's say, a Phase Two and that doesn't go through, then we're in a rental agreement for eons trying to find a place to perform, and really a place to perform is actually your centerpiece of your Performing Arts Academy or your Visual Arts Academy. I think of the ACA downtown, you know, it's a beacon of community gathering, and you would want that Como space to be part of the community, local, hopefully partnerships with community figures to grow that program. So, my opinion would be, if there's a way to maybe shrink to the freshman class size, see how much money that saves us and work in some studio space, especially for dance, because she, dance and piano have it a little bit harder because of electrical wiring and space, I can make do. That's why I'm the director, I'm okay, I'll teach in a closet if I have to for them to get what they need. But if we could maybe shrink the auditorium size to the freshman class size and see what additional classroom space we could get, maybe we could find a happy medium where if Phase Two were to get delayed, that we're not missing an integral component of the whole. Thank you.
My name is Justin Centani. These are all very good...
These are all very good, very good discussions here. I've enjoyed it. I think we're heading down the right path of figuring out what we need versus what we want, what we can afford, what we can prioritize and do first, do second. I think that's all really good. I heard Ms. Hawkins say that it's very difficult to schedule in the springtime, which kind of lends credence to the idea that we could, there is a market to rent this facility. And I'd be curious to know if we, I don't wanna say have we done a market study or done anything out in the community to gauge the demand for this? Because this could be the way that we get from four-hundred-and-fifty to eight-hundred seats is by either getting some agreements with the dance studios in Youngsville and Bruce Hard in the southern end of the parish to use our auditorium if we build it, or doing some kind of community partnership and raising money or something. I think there's a way here. There's a way to get from what we can definitely afford to what the community probably will support and need. So, have we done any kind of other than, hey, we're pretty confident we can rent it?
So, do you mind if Matt just responds? He's begun work on trying to analyze the rental needs.
I have contacted, spoken to Dr. Roban, also the band director for Como. And I guess it was hard because we didn't really know what we were looking at. And then the need, you know, obviously, eight-hundred seats would be easier to rent than six-hundred seats. But would it produce enough revenue? Also, you have to look at the calendar because that, that's what we're trying to do now is to try to say, well, the school's gonna have priority, so when will they be using it? And which means, well, the dance studios wanna come in in April and May. Well, in the summertime, it may be free, but in April and May, you have the end of the semester concerts and things that may be happening in there. Can you do those during the week and rent on the weekends? I mean, there's a whole bunch of scenarios we could work on. But we kind of stopped in that to know what kind of facility we were looking at. I guess it's a chicken and egg kind of thing. But we have contacted people in the community to try to get together and come up with rental rates and possibility of renting the facility and making a community facility.
Yes, Ms. Morrison?
Yes, I just wanted to say I do agree with making sure the students have what they need, having the learning space, having their own auditorium. That's why we voted for the Arts Academy to be at Como High. So we need to make sure that they have what they need, really look at the prices. But I think that needs to be the way that we move forward, is to make sure that they have what they need. Even though I think it's a good idea to have the community input and the community supporters in this initiative. So, just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Good evening. Yvonne Zino, the new principal at Como High School. What I am thinking is that there is going to be a shift with students going to the new high schools, outside high school. So when you start looking at the available space on campus, we should have enough space to accommodate the performing arts program. So what I would like to see is that we get the auditorium built because a lot of funding, a lot of fundraising has to take place to rent other facilities. And if we're going to have the Performing Arts Academy, we need to bring our community to our school. That's what I would like to see. And I really don't think that classroom space is going to be an issue because if I'm understanding it correctly, we are going to lose part of our population at Como High School when the new school opens up. So we're gonna have available space. I know that everyone is probably not going to be centralized located where we have all of our visual and performing arts together. But the ideal is to have them on the same campus, which I know we can't do. Because I, Mary Sonnier, who I'm replacing as the principal, had already started taking a look at what's available on the campus. And I know that we have already spotted a place to put our dance academy. And there are shifting rooms around right now to make available space for the other programs that are coming. And I personally would like to see that we do get our theater because that would keep our people and our programs from having to fundraise and go out into the community and try to rent facilities when we could have our own facility on our campus. And eventually, it's gonna come anyway, so just why not do it now? That's my thought. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And by the way, welcome and congratulations as the new principal. I do wanna respond to that. I agree, there will be a shift in enrollment once the zones are redrawn. And we were hoping and praying that once that happens, we can get rid of some of the Butler Buildings on campus. So, that would mean that available space would be proportionate to the amount of students there. I'll also say that in line with what several folks have said tonight, you know, we, my goal is to make sure the students have what they need first, and then what we want second. Well, I would guess that what the dance teacher needs is not a Butler Building or not a brick-and-mortar classroom as it is today, but a more universal space for her. I'm not going against what you're saying. I guess what I'm saying is, to me, this auditorium is certainly much more of a need as opposed to the learning space, however we wanna define that, for what the band and what the performing arts needs. So, I agree mostly, what you said. Mrs. Centani?
I forgot last time what Ms. Hawkins said. Jodden made me think that we tell them we have auditoriums, we have Lafayette Middle, we have Moss that was renovated a few years ago. She said Lafayette High was becoming almost unusable for dance because of a safety issue. So I suggested, and perhaps the Facilities Committee might be interested in getting with the performing arts faculty and touring the auditoriums that we have. And perhaps there are some modifications that we could make to the Lafayette Middle stage or the Moss stage that would accommodate them. And maybe they're not adequate as they are, but maybe there are some smaller modifications or renovations that could be made that would help them out because we certainly were able to prioritize them in that space.
Mrs. Centani, how many seats in Lafayette Middle and Lafayette High and Moss, if you know?
Lafayette Middle is over seven-hundred, and it has a balcony.
And that's what I'm getting at. The only auditorium I have not been in is the Lafayette High Auditorium. And I'm afraid to go because the last time you went, you had about six inches of water that you were walking in, so I don't wanna get my feet wet. But, you know, my thing is, is we, that's what I was getting at earlier. We know we have facilities to perform. So, do we need another performance facility, or do we need another learning?
No, and I tend to, I tend to agree with you and Mr. Lachey that the phases were a little backwards. I thought Phase Two would have been the first thing because poor Ms. McElmore over there is in the converted conference room at the end of the hallway in Lafayette High with a bunch of pianos. And the strings and the guitars are in the portable buildings out back. And the dance team shares a practice space with the wrestling team. And, you know, and despite that, they're doing fantastic work and the children are getting a superb arts education. And so I think day-to-day-to-day-to-day-to-day, we always talk about what do the kids need? What do the kids need? What do the kids need? Be great for the strings that perform three times a year, Dr. Roban? Like invite the public in, get the parents, put on a coat, and see your kid play guitar? Like, how many times a year do they perform? There you go, fifteen or twenty times. So, how many days were they in the classroom? There was a few more than that, though, right? So, that, I guess the point is, I think, despite the risk that the auditorium may not be built, or we may run into some problems securing funding or something like that, I think it's a worthwhile risk to take to guarantee that on a day-to-day basis, you guys have the space that you need to do your job even better and have the kids learn even more. My personal opinion.
I hate to cut you short, but that looks like a checkbook, so I want her to come up. She might be prepared to write a check tonight.
I spoke with Ms. Lyles this morning. You're gonna love what she has to say.
Okay, come on up.
For twenty-seven years now, and have a whole lot of experience in using facilities, putting on performances, working with school programs. And I just wanna commend you, number one, because it is important that we have literacy. But we can't have real literacy and real understanding of each other without cultural literacy. So this is so important. I wanna just make a couple of points. As far as availability of other venues for your programs to rent, those are few and far between. The Hyman Center is booked every single day except for Memorial Day sometime from April fifteenth until June thirtieth, July first, July second. Angel Hall on campus, you cannot access at all until the university has set its programming for the year. And it could be that there's not a space available. That's the same thing for Burke Theater, which holds about three-hundred people. Now, you do have your four-hundred and I think nineteen seats at NP Moss Annex. And I'm looking into the technical capabilities of that theater because I would like to use it, but I will tell you, it's very difficult for somebody from the public to find out what the technical capabilities are of that theater. I was able to find out by tracking down the architect. What I spoke to each of you about, and I've had a conversation with Mayor Robado about the need for a theater on the south side of town. That came up in a discussion with dance groups. And I'm not talking about dance studios. I'm talking about professional performers and choreographers here who are all bubbling up great work, which are great opportunities for the dancers you're training. They feel like we need a theater on this side of town. So when they say we need a theater, they don't mean we need a theater that we can't access. They mean we need a theater where we can work. So, I believe that there is some creativity that can be activated around funding to look at a partnership between local government, your budget, and private philanthropy. We in Louisiana tend to build capital facilities using capital outlays. And we forget that we can activate private philanthropy. So I encourage you to look at a different model or consider another way to do that. The last point I think I wanted to make is that the design, and I'm sorry that I didn't see your design presentation, but I would encourage you to make it a design that has public access, that is not impeded by the restrictions of the school grounds where you're protecting your students. In other school systems in other states, playgrounds are shared with local government. There are no fences on the playgrounds. This is a great opportunity for citizens and for budgets. The other point that I wanna make is too often, we move forward without the information that we need. And I would be very sad to see you move forward without an actual feasibility study that examines a community need. I can tell you what I know by practical experience, but that is not backed up by data. An example is the three-hundred-seat theater at the ACA. We already knew that a three-hundred-seat theater was not financially doable. The economy of scale in the performing arts industry changed between the time a three-hundred-seat theater was first spoken about and when it was actually built. Excuse me. We knew already from practical experience that the Manchep Theater in Baton Rouge was not financially viable, not without a huge dose of money put into it from the Baton Rouge area foundation. So, we, I would really discourage you from doing anything more than you know you can operate and maintain because a theater is going to need a technical director, it's gonna need a lighting person, it's gonna need a special kind of maintenance. There's so many other things that go into a theater besides the building costs. And here again, in our community, we tend to build without those considerations actually budgeted for, planned for, and the future revenues identified for. My last warning is this. It is unreasonable and unwise to think that rental of the facility is necessarily going to return a positive income to you. That is just a fact. It's a fact across the country. There are venues everywhere that struggle every single day of the week. And you all have a particular issue that some not-for-profits do not have. You have to produce a balanced budget every year. Not-for-profits are a different model of business. And their profit margin comes and goes. So, with all those things in mind, feasibility study, actual understanding of operations and maintenance, knowledge of where revenue might come from, and a check on whether or not that's also feasible. After that, it's really great as a graduate of Como High School to think that as a dancer, a pianist, a flute player, and a saxophonist, and somebody who took home ec, that this facility would actually come to be at Como High School. As a professional working in the field, I offer you any knowledge that I can help you drum up, as well as direction to people whom I know of and expertise that I know is available, sometimes for free. I don't consider myself an expert on a facility by any means. My area of expertise is otherwise. Thank you.
Dr. Roban, again, a couple of quick comments. Thanks. She was mentioning needing a technical director and these things to run a theater. I think if you look at a long-term vision, that's our students' job. Right? My music media class is designed to teach people how to record and to run sound. And I'm sure that Ms. Hawkins' dance teaches choreography. And I'm sure Charlie's Theater teaches technical things like set design, running curtains, lights, and so forth. So actually, an auditorium is a very important component of the learning process because that's where internships, community partnership with local lighting people like Brian, who used to do the lights at ACA, looking at sound guys from the community to pay and come give a lesson to the students and let them run the sound for the facility for all the performances and let them become immersed in what it is to be a professional artist, which is really to know every job. We don't have a job, we have the job. I'm the sound guy at Lafayette High. I'm the one who just put the lighting in. I didn't personally, but I wrote all the paperwork, state contract. I don't know anything about it, but we figure it out. And so, an auditorium is an important component of the learning process. As far as rental of facilities, and again, I'm not trying to choose sides. That's not my job. Y'all are the school board, and that's your job. But I think we're missing a little bit about parents. So, the students at school all day at Como High, then they have to find a way to get from Como High to NP Moss, and they happen to live close to south side high zone, let's see. So personally, as a parent, I run off of work, or maybe, you know, kid gets on the, how are we gonna get the kids from Como High for after-school rehearsal if it's at NP Moss? And how are parents who are way on the other side of town gonna pick up their kid? I think the whole idea of everything being inclusive within your school is that that school becomes a part of your community and Como High becomes where everybody meets and greets and does their certain, you know, communal thing. And so, as far as size goes, if rental doesn't seem to be a positive reinforcement, then maybe we can make a smaller auditorium, but still have that as a training space for all the students and a meeting place for their parents to own and have ownership in their school. I think of all the universities I went to, Alabama, Denny Chimes, Roll Tide. South Carolina was the horseshoe, the historic horseshoe with the Civil War wrought iron fences. And when you go to that school, that's what you remember. And so every university we attend, there's something. The football team, the quad, where we used to hang out and do whatever we did. So I just, I want everyone to think about, is there a way to get as much as we can under the idea that we never know what happens in the future, but we know we have one shot right now? We've got one shot right now, maybe a shot in the future. I'm pretty sure that we build classrooms more frequently than we build auditoriums. Because if that were the case, Como would already have one. Right? And so, if there's some sort of happy medium that all these brains and creative minds can come into, like Ms. Lyle said, before we jump ship, let's think of the long-term goal of the performing arts and visual arts is to have an inclusive community. All right? So that opening of that auditorium could be an art gallery, Brian. You walk into the auditorium, and it's an art gallery. Only for your students. Or maybe traveling exhibits for the students to look at. So maybe we need to think a little creatively, long-term, and as much as we can while we have this shot. The fish only bites so long. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, yep. I, for me, this keeps going back to rehearsal. It keeps going back to learning. It keeps going back to learning, uh, and it's, it stayed farther away from performing. So I think we need some direction here tonight to, uh, my, my opinion, uh, fellow committee members would be, ma'am? Yeah, my, my opinion would be to, um, send this to our distinguished finance committee to review, but, um, with a little bit of guidance on maybe looking at Phase Two, Option Two, ahead of Phase One, Option Two. Again, it covers, um, the learning and the need over the desire and the want. And so I certainly am not ready to vote to get into theater business, so, um, I can make a motion. Mr. Lotchel, it was along the lines of what you were saying. You can make a motion if you'd like. Ms. Morrison, I know you, Morrison, I know you have some questions, um, if you want to ask them now. Go ahead.
I wasn't sure where the finance is involved. Is there a set amount of money that we prepared to spend on this project, or we're just, we're not there yet?
We, we're not quite there yet. And Mr. Hidalgo, may I suggest also, since I've heard this as an, a possibility, maybe get with, um, Eric and, um, we look at a five-hundred-seat venue and see what additional spaces can be created. We are, it is correct to assume that we are thinking about twelve million dollars as a starting point for discussion. So the question would be, if, if an eight-hundred-seat auditorium is budgeted at twelve million dollars, then what would a five-hundred-seat auditorium come in at, and how many additional spaces could we provide with the twelve-million-dollar budget? And then likewise, look at Phase Two, as you suggested, and then bring all of that to the finance committee at some point.
I guess my only concern with that is, um, it's more marketable as an eight-hundred-seat facility than it is five-hundred. We already have a couple or a few five-hundred or larger-seat facilities in the parish, and third and most importantly is to go from a five-hundred-seat facility to eight-hundred-seat is a lot more expensive than just building the eight-hundred-seat facility out of the gate. So I don't, I wouldn't want to see us get nuts, you know, in five years after a facility's built to try to enlarge a facility. But, I mean, let's bring it to the finance committee. Um, I think that's a great idea, is to let the finance committee.
Yes, sir. And what I heard was that you don't do it that way. You don't add seats to the auditorium. I think the decision, what I heard, several comments were that we're not gonna make much money renting this facility. It's foolish to assume that we're gonna make twenty-five percent of the cost of the building. That's not gonna happen. Plus, we're not gonna get into our own building because it's gonna be rented. What I heard was, let's provide the maximum number of spaces that we can, because we have one shot at this.
Mr. Lotchel? You want to make a motion?
I gotta figure out how to word this. Can I just make a motion that we send this to the finance committee?
Yes. Sure.
I'm sorry. Ms. Zino, my name is, my name is Scott Geiger. I'm gonna be one of your band directors. I was just hired on, so welcome. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, I'm, I'm gonna be one of the band directors at Como High, and I, I can't help but, uh, there seems to be some going back and forth about the size of the, of the auditorium and whatnot, and the facilities and all that. And, um, and whereas initially I, I gave something to Mr. Craig, um, several years ago, uh, we had organized something when we were told there might be an auditorium being built, uh, with the last superintendent when he first got here. Um, I, I do have to question in terms of why we keep talking about the size of the auditorium. I know we spoke at length, and you know that I don't care to double facilities. Why, when you have a hundred, and this is not anything against drama, please don't make it feel that way, why do we have a hundred-and-fifty-seat black box theater when there's also a plan to be putting a black box theater at South Side High School? And, and when you start talking about that type of a facility, you're not just talking about a hundred-and-fifty, a hundred-and-fifty seats. You're talking about all those cans for lighting, you're talking about sound, you're talking about, uh, you are talking about the general maintenance and, uh, getting all the electrical and the heating and cooling and all those types of things. And all of a sudden, if you take that hundred-and-fifty-seat black box theater, and you immediately turn that into classroom space, that is heating and cooling that already is there, that's in that cost, that you don't have as a performance, a second performance venue that quite honestly won't, won't really be used at the same time as the theater is, and, and, and creating a better organized thought process of that manner, of, of actually looking at what's going to be used, what you actually already do have, like being said, but we have a black box theater, and, and you're now building a black box theater in a brand-new school. So I'm, I'm posing that question to you to think about, instead of just saying, let's cut seats. Uh, you, you have other, there, there are other options that, but for some reason, we're really big on these black box theaters that, that you're already building one. So that, that's just my personal thought process, because that wasn't ever addressed. I thought I'd at least bring that up to start out with, before we, uh, before we just start cutting things and making things smaller, or we don't, we don't know, so.
Padraig Gidry, I'm the Art and Music Specialist. Um, I'm just gonna give you my opinion on the black box. Basically, for a black box is, is what that theater class needs to teach. So they're gonna use their performances. It's not only used for people to come in, but they use the black box space for that. If this is a Performing Arts Academy, that is one of the number-one things that we need. South Side is just another school, and it was important to add it for theater, for that cl- that program, but this is the Performing Arts Academy, so that is very important that we would have it in our phase that would be for the learning portion. Thank you.
I would have to agree with you, Ms. Gidry.
It's kinda what I've been saying.
Yeah, kinda, sorta. I'm gonna make a motion that we go ahead and ask our finance committee to take a look at the numbers and maybe see if we can get back a few more numbers on a couple of different, different options and send it to the finance committee and see what they can, uh, they can come up with. So my motion is to send this project to the finance committee for their input. Mr. Centani?
I'll second.
Something tells me this is gonna be three to nothing.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to, Mr. Lotchel, just to clarify, you want to send this?
I guess what I want is, is, is to get the options money-wise, you know, on a Phase One, a Phase Two, a, a five-hundred-seat auditorium. Let the finance committee look at it and see what, what's workable, and then if it has to come back to us to vote on what type of facilities to recommend to the board is, is what I'd like to see.
All right, we have a motion and a second to send this to the finance committee. Is there any discussion from anyone in the public? Any other discussion from Mr. Lotchel or Ms. Morrison? Okay, we'll call for the vote.
Three for, none against.
Motion carries. Item two-point-three, Green Tea Linden Elementary Purchase Property Playground Improvements. Mr. Bordelaw. We've got two minutes for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Hidalgo. Um, what you have in your packet is the, uh, plans that went out for bidding. Uh, as you may recall, at the July sixth board meeting, the board did approve the low quote, uh, from a contractor to get this work done. We're in the process of getting those contracts signed at this time, and as soon as we get those signed, we'll be starting on that work.
Mr. Bordelaw, if you don't mind, I'd like to remind everybody in the room that the committee meeting is still going on, and, uh, there is a report being given at this time. Thank you. Could you repeat that, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, the, the, what's attached in your packet is the plans that went out for bidding on the, uh, purchase property improvements, which was drainage work, uh, removal of trees, and fencing for the approximate five acres that was purchased behind Green Tea Linden. Uh, those, that low quote was awarded by the board on July sixth to a contractor. We're in the process of issuing those contracts now, and we will begin on that work just as soon as we get all that paperwork, uh, signed up.
Thank you for the update, Mr. Bordelaw. I'm assuming you don't need any action. There's no action needed on this item. Item two-point-four, Projects Listings, Facilities and Maintenance Department. Mr. Bordelaw?
Yes, sir. I was requested that, uh, my department provide a listing of the projects that we're working on. So what's attached, uh, we have summer projects that are being handled by the maintenance department and our maintenance guys. Um, we also have a listing of projects that Planning and Facilities Department has, uh, has and statuses on those projects, and we also have a listing of projects that my construction coordinator is taking care of on a day-to-day basis. You will, you may find, if you, if you examine these very closely, you may find some small overlaps, but, um, we're all working together back in my department to try and get as much of this stuff done as we can, and as you can see, we do have a lot on our plate, so we're handling it just as fast as we can. Any questions? Do you run them off?
Okay, item two-point-five, LPSS Development and Stages of a Construction, of, of a Construction and Renovation Project. Mr. Bordelaw?
Uh, yes, sir. It was requested that I provide, uh, information on the steps, uh, that it takes to get a project, uh, started, completed, and everything else in between. So what I provided for you is just that, step-by-step process of where we, uh, come up with the ideas, or staff, or the school administrators come up with the project, goes to the board for, uh, budgeting and budget approval, the steps that we have to go through, codes, um, getting it to, through an architect or an engineer, design, bidding, award by the board, et cetera, through construction and coordination of all the work that has to take place, and coordination with the school, the school schedule, the testing, and everything else in between.
I'll say, Mr. Bordelaw, I was asked to put this on the agenda by a fellow board member, and I'll tell you that I agree, and I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody, but I do agree with my fellow board member that it does appear that these projects take way too long to get off the ground. So the question to you is, in light of the information you've given us, what can be done, what can we do as a board, as a committee, as a school system, to make sure that these projects are not lingering as they have been in the past?
Well, Mr. Hidalgo, the board has helped me out, because in the last six months, you've allowed me to ta- hire two very qualified people to help me out in my department. As you can understand, the last three years has been a very interesting and trying time in my department. Um, so now that we've cleared some of those past hurdles, uh, I've got some qualified staff to help me out, and we plan to move a lot of these forward with more speed.
Is any, uh, go ahead.
I have to admit, looking, looking at the information you provided, there's more involved than I would have thought.
Yes, sir.
You know, me, I'm like, I voted on it today, why can't we start it tomorrow? Just didn't know how much red tape you had to go through within the school system, or if there were rules and regulations that were preventing you from moving projects along faster, if there was policy changes the board could make, or just anything we could do to help you. Um, I mean, we all want the projects in our districts to move, move along quickly. We'd, we'd like to see them. Unfortunately, uh, with the size of your department, you can't have thirty or forty projects going at the same time. Understand that the summer is, is the time with some projects, and some you can do during school. Uh, it is something I wanted to look at and see, and it's, it's a little more detailed than I thought. Appreciate what you're doing so far, um, but I, I do have some projects that I know that, that in my district that have, that have been kinda lagging over the years, that I'd, I'd like to see get done. Uh, we can talk about that offline, just, just some, if I get some information on them, but, uh, I do thank you for what you, you provided for us.
All right, you're welcome.
Mr. Bordelaw, is there, are there any steps or any components of steps that could be, uh, done away with? Does this need any revision? Is this, are all these steps necessary as written?
Uh, yes, sir, they are. Um, I mean, we do have to follow public bid law. We do have to follow our, our internal procedures, uh, for obtaining quotes, uh, so that we stay straight with our auditors. Uh, we do have to follow the building codes. We do have to follow consolidated governments', uh, code review. Um, so there are a lot of steps to these projects, but they are, uh, for the good of everything. Uh, it helps to ensure that we get a good quality project in the end, that we don't get something that's substandard that will not last. Um, and I would, personally, I would rather spend a couple of dollars more on something to get a little better quality that we know will last longer, uh, as opposed to taking it on the cheap that it, it will not last.
Okay. My last comment about that, uh, about this, yes, ma'am. My last comment about this is that, if I understand correctly, um, sometimes a project is held up because we're simply waiting on someone to sign a document. And so, if that is the case, Mr. Bordelaw, I just ask that you let us know as a committee, as, however, whatever process we have to use, how we can do a better job on our end to make these things flow better than they have been, if that's at all possible. I did my duty putting it on the agenda. Ms. Morrison?
I want you to know we have a list of all the projects and where we are with them, especially maybe in our districts.
It's attached in your, in-
We do have a-
With the agenda item.
Okay, of all the projects that are going on in every district.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I didn't identify them by district, but if you go down the list, you'll, you'll recognize the school names and the statuses.
Okay, item two-point-six, Maintenance Work Order Report. Mr. Bordelaw?
Thank you. Um, for the year that we just ended, the fiscal year we just ended, I'll be as brief as I can. Um, we have some information included in your, in your packet, uh, like, uh, work orders completed. We have a chart showing the last three years. Uh, we are about on target, uh, for the last, for the same complete, number of completed work orders over the last three years, which, uh, we finished up last year, completing twenty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-five work orders at all of our school sites.
Go ahead, Mr. Bordelaw.
Thank you, Mr. Hidalgo, for recognizing that. Our backlog work orders is, uh, is a few down, which is a good thing, but we still have five-hundred-and-eighteen work orders on backlog. Um, we've got a nice colorful pie chart to show you, uh, which departments completed how many work orders, and how, which departments have how many backlog work orders, and if you'd really like to know all the details of the department and the type of work order that was completed, and by month, we've got that included in your packet also. So if you have any questions, I'm done.
I'm sure, Mr. Hidalgo, support me on this. Could we, from now on, all projects done at high schools would go alphabetical order?
No, sir.
I thought I could get you voting, Ms., I bet you Ms. Morrison will vote.
That's your majority.
Coin flip.
All right, do we have any further questions? Oh, great, hearing none. This concludes all the items on our agenda. This meeting is adjourned.